Agenda.
Second.
And moved in second to approve the consent agenda, on favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion passes. Next, public comment, is there anybody here like to speak to something that's not on the agenda?
I just wanted to follow up with the changing of guard, because I know Casey you've been working on the water line. Potential to get some funding. Just if you had any updates, and I'm sure. You know, probably won't be done by the end of the year, I'm sure.
No.
Solidify some funding. And I'm sure you'll pass that on to whomever to carry that torch, but if you had any promising updates on that, was was one of them. And then also the. Where where. You are at with the administration administrator position? Again, Baldwin is unique where we have a. An absent administrator and now, you know, you have some longevity here and and now we're going to have new people come in. And I didn't know if, and again, you may have already visited with the incoming mayor, but I didn't know if. He was in on the interview processes, so there was a transition or just. I'm just curious of where where we are at with the administrator hiring.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else like to speak to public comment?
There we go, I know as Mayor Letta had asked the Honorable Mayor Semino where you were at in the hiring process with the city administrator. I want to speak very honestly and very upfront, I think that I need to have a part in that selection process as a new incoming mayor. I think it is important that I see and have the opportunity to help interview, review, and look at the individual that you're looking at, what their qualifications are, and what their criteria or our criteria is for selection. I'm not going to say that, you know, I have infinite knowledge, but I have ran literally hundreds of hiring processes. Through my career, I would like to see a committee made up of members of our city government. I'd like to see a committee made up of our city employees, also setting them on this board, so they feel like they have an option as well, and some input into the hiring process. So my comments are, I really want to take place in that, I would think we would be derelict if I did not take place in it. That's just my comments, and you know my feelings on it, and we will proceed from there. Hopefully I'll be hearing from you in the future, as to yeah, we think you need to be included. If not, then we'll just see where it goes, and I think that I speak for a lot of my constituents as well, who came to me and expressed the same concerns. You know what I know, so, but. Mayor Semino, thank you, thank you for your time, I appreciate it, thank you for your feedback prior, okay, I appreciate it.
Anybody else like to speak to anything? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. First item on the agenda is a planning commission appointment. We had a member step down last week. And resigned from the planning commission, so I'm recommending to the council appoint Joe Torkelson to the planning commission to fulfill that, the rest of that term of that that person stepping down, so. Joe, if you want to introduce yourself real quick, kind of give a little bit of back of your background.
My name's Joe, I've stood up here a couple times and got, you know, an Airbnb through the process, I rezoned a property, I rehabbed, you know, went through the processes and kind of saw, you know, how it works. Little bit about my background, I guess, I volunteer at Palmyra Fire Department, I'm a captain on the department. Been there for eleven years, so I volunteered for a while, I'm a general contractor. I've, you know, been doing that for a while, been in construction for almost twenty years, so I've been in the field and feel that I do have some knowledge in, you know, in construction and some of the processes it takes to to go through, so. Other than that, yeah, I've been a resident in Baldwin for eleven years now and. That's about it.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else like to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, council discussion?
Sounds like a good appointment.
Seems qualified and willing to serve.
Absolutely.
Check, check.
Entertaining motion.
I move to approve, approve Joe Torkelson as a planning commission appointee.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay, motion passes. Next agenda item is ordinance fifteen twenty-four, so this is kind of a generic ordinance that's. Put forth to the council. We've had a lot of Airbnb requests, we've never disproved or disapproved of any of them. Some council members reached out and requested that we speak about this. So this council can do what they wish, but this is essentially a repeal of. Ordinance for bed and breakfast in Baldwin, which is essentially what Baldwin's been following. Stu, do you have anything to say to this?
I couldn't hear you. On the bed and breakfast stuff, excuse me. You know, we have the RLD, the R one A, the R one B, and the R one C, single family designation for the city. Which is just that, single family. My understanding is that. In some way or another, we're going to not need to go to the planning commission to approve a bed and breakfast, is that correct?
Well, it's whatever the council decides to do, this is just a first ring of an ordinance.
That was my understanding of what was getting ready to take place here, so, anyway. The city code speaks directly, it gives people the opportunity in a given neighborhood that's dedicated to single family to have the ability and the opportunity to go before the planning commission and weigh in their opinion on whether they want a bed and breakfast or not in their given area. There's also other things to consider, like off-street parking amount, there's several things to consider. I'm not aware that the planning commission has denied any bed and breakfast on my watch. However, the opportunity for neighbors on a case-by-case basis is the way the city code reads to to look at that and be able to weigh in in a given situation on on the size of a property or how much parking there may or may not be is is critically important. The. The planning commission shall hold. A public hearing following the provisions also outlined in Article thirty-one of these regulations and shall review such development plan and statements and shall, after a careful study of the effect of such building structures or uses, will have upon the surrounding property. Submit recommendation to the governing body. And this this planning commission review is has a little length to it, but this is all city code and you might say city law. It's the intent of the article to require a conditional use permit for all proposed land uses, except those specifically prohibited, some aren't. But when you get into the single-family, four different functional dwelling zoning rules we have, and you're bringing in. A small motel, if you would, or boarding house, Airbnb. More than one family, then you're going to be in direct violation of of RLD, R one A, R one B, R one C. It's a direct violation without having approval. From the planning commission, and then of course approval from the governing body. I don't see personally, you know, the, as a city code official, the benefit of it. In a residential district, an apartment or detached garage may be established, provided that no such action shall reduce the number of available off-street parking spaces required. And that the additional off-street parking shall be established for such an apartment. Right underneath that it says, you know, bed and breakfast facility. So I I would ask that the that the city council consider this. As much as possible. More for the ninety percent of the people that won't have Airbnb. And probably less for the few that will, I'm not against having apartments and places to stay, obviously, we don't have a hotel here anymore, a motel. But I I do believe that our codes are written correctly, that the individual private citizens in Baldwin should have some say, and at least be given an opportunity to come to the planning commission and weigh in if it fits their individual neighborhood. You know, a lot of them do, there may be some that that do not. The other thing is that. As far as the code standpoint, and and I know that the doc is more of the planning commission, but no building or structure shall be used or occupied. And no change in the existing occupancy. Classification, which will be going from a single family to more or less two-family. Classification of a building or structure or portion thereof shall be made until the building official has issued a certificate of occupancy therefore is provided herein. This is out of two thousand and three international residential code. R one ten point two, change in use, changes in the character or use of an existing structure shall not be made. Except as specified in section thirty-four oh six, thirty-four oh seven of the international building code, which is the IBC. So the IRC refers you to the IBC, two thousand and three international building code tells you conformance, change of occupancy conformance, no change shall be made in the use of occupancy or building that would place the building or occupancy of any building, sorry, that would place the building in a different division of the same group, such as going from a R one to an R two. So you've got your permitting side of it, which so far in the city of Baldwin, the few Airbnbs we've done, which went very smoothly. I went and done an inspection, we request that we do it yearly, obviously, some people don't keep up with it. We go in and we check the exits, the bedroom regress window sizes, we check the smoke detectors. And carbon monoxide, basically, safety checks, you've got the city, city building code over here, and then you've got the planning commission over here. So my my request would be no change in current regulations, any questions?
Thanks, Stu.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak to this agenda item?
You allowed public to come up?
Yeah.
As you know, I have almost forty years in the building and planning. What am I trying to say, job? Historically, because a lot of times we approve plans, change or ordinances and change them, and then we look back and a few mistakes are made along the way, which is human nature. But. As Stu spoke, allowing neighborhoods within that two hundred feet, which is required in the city, a thousand in the county. Within that two hundred, to allow the public to come and listen and hear and express. You know, support or concerns is is vital. We've heard a lot, especially with the utility debacle, transparency, communication. To deny. A property owner the ability to know what is going on within that. State statute identified two hundred feet area. Would be going backwards. People have safety concerns. And and it doesn't, it 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 just allows them a voice, and sometimes there are remedies between the applicant and neighbors, if if there's enough. There can be a meet-in-the-middle type, you know, maybe screening or noise, you know, requirements, or I mean, sometimes it's just the little things. And and it would be sad to take that away, it truly would. I don't know of a jurisdiction unless they absolutely don't have codes that doesn't have that in place. And so I would encourage you to, I don't know what your verbiage is on this ordinance, so I'm a little, you know, handicapped on that part, but I would encourage to to stay the course of going to the planning commission for review, and then they make the recommendations to the council for final approval or denial.
Tina, I have actually a question for you.
You bet.
You've worked in Lawrence, didn't Lawrence just relax their Airbnb code for the World Cup?
I actually worked in the county.
Okay.
So I'm not that familiar with the county. But I do know that Iowa.
I thought there was some change up there that I read somewhere that.
Yes, and I will say, because I ironically attended a retirement of Mary Miller, who, if any of you have been around for a long in the planning, she's been an icon and been around for so many centuries. And they were all talking about this World Cup, I mean, and having big meetings with all the Kansas City area, Wichita, all around because of the people coming in, and big concerns, you know, transportation, but a lot of it was on housing and where to be, you know, and even concern about people kicking their tenants out and raising the rent for that duration of time, so they were actually setting setting rules in place so they couldn't do that, and. So if they have relaxed, you know, is there a sunset on it, I don't know, but it wouldn't surprise me. Maybe if they did something to accommodate that, because it's, listening to their conversations. Was extremely fascinating on the gamut of the effects that we're going to have, I mean, even. Even as much as. What do I want to say? Child. Prostitution or whatever, I mean, there are is so much that comes with these big events coming into an area. And so every agency, it's all hands on deck. And and because we are so centrally located, is what they have been told. That we are, we're going to get a lot of people coming and going, and like I said, transportation, but primarily housing was a was a really big deal. So yes, I I would be prepared for that, and I don't remember the duration.
May third, July.
I was going to say, it seemed like it was a, in the summer months, but I couldn't quite remember that window, so, you know. Colleges are going to be out. You know, it wouldn't surprise me if, I know Baker does a lot of camps and stuff. You know, would we know the difference if there are people staying for the event or not or something? But it's something, and I'm sure our police chief is heavily involved in those conversations as well. But it but it truly is something to to consider, because the biggest thing that I heard from the people in that meeting were protecting their citizens, protecting their own. For the little bit of time that unfortunately people are going to get a bit greedy. And how, they even talked about, they've been talking to grocery stores, like, don't jack the food prices up, don't jack the restaurant prices up, I mean, it's it's really, really a unique, exciting venture. But, yeah, I I think it's something that you should. Discuss, and and maybe you, if somebody wants to do something, be on the front, be proactive and say, hey, we know this is coming, there might be opportunities, but there's going to be a sunset. We need to have it inspected for a smoke alarm, you know, just the life safety thing, so people aren't just renting, you know, their garage out for something, but yeah, ju- jump up front, you know, maybe have a town hall meeting or something, and, so I don't know, just just two cents.
Yep.
Okay.
Anybody else like to speak to this agenda item?
I guess to comment what I heard about with what Lawrence is doing is they're not cracking down on the illegal, you know, they're not, they're not registered Airbnbs, so, and this is more of a bed and breakfast topic, not Airbnb, but we're on the topic Airbnb, is that correct?
Well, that's the confusing part, and that's why I wanted to bring it to the council's attention, whether it's done now, later, it doesn't matter. But the code addresses air- or bed and breakfast.
Okay.
Doesn't talk anything about Airbnbs.
So, couple of questions I have, and I know Stu kind of mentioned, you know, yearly inspection for Airbnbs in town, I mean, are those required or are they recommended? For.
Required.
Required, so, people that are doing it, are they incentivized, because you said there's no crackdown on it, with that being said, there's no crackdown on Airbnbs that haven't been, you know, registered or gone through the planning commission? So what incentivizes anyone to even do it? If I'm going to open a bed and breakfast, why even come up here and and go through the the show when there's no recourse for not doing it? That's kind of my question with all of this, I mean, we stand up here and talk about it, but what's the point of doing it, no one's cracking down on any of it, so. That's my comment.
And and you bring up a good point, and I think sometimes in life with rules and regulations, you probably know as a builder in your experience. Things are unregulated until it's time to regulate them. And the thing about transient nature of stay is the people don't know their surroundings. So in the middle of the night. Smoke alarm's going off, or there's smoke, or there's a panic, or they come home intoxicated. When people don't know their surroundings, it it creates another layer of safety. And so. Part of it, I will say, when I used to work here, we had. Gosh, we had one, two, three, four employees in an apartment that there's one. And so it should be regulated, but one person can only do so much. Baldwin did experience their first, so I don't want you to get hung up on Airbnb and bed and breakfast. What we did when I was employed here, there was a gal on Ninth Street, she was the first one that tested the waters, and she was denied initially, and I think she eventually got approved, but you're better to call it, and what we decided at that time, is short-term stay. So don't get hung up on Airbnb or bed and breakfast, it's short-term stay, so most. And and again. People pay a monthly rent, it's not uncommon to pay, you know, by the month. And that was the cutoff where where people said, well, what's short-term? And that was kind of the happy medium that we all just, and 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 we had conversations with Lawrence at that time when I was employed here. And to me, I think that still sounds like a reasonable. Something to work with, you know, short-term, one day, two day, five, you know, what is it, thirty days was the was the cutoff to say, long-term. Because you don't have time, and you don't want to get into somebody that rents by the month. That's that's not what you're after, really. That's that's a more considered long-term stay, so just some feedback to help help on that part, especially with you being new, you know, sharing some information from you.
Respond to Joe's question. The crackdown, you might say, is. In some ways done by complaint, if we get complaints on campers, Airbnb, certain things, we pursue it with extremely limited staff and the school and three subdivisions and everything going on in the city right now. There's a very limited amount of time we can address things. If you get into code book, responsibility to follow the codes and do the correct thing is on the people, it's not on the building department. We try to do what we can to intervene and make what's needing to be right, right? But at the end of the day, ignorance of the law is no excuse. And explain that to the state fire marshal, your house burns up, you've got an illegal Airbnb, and you can tell that to them, it's not going to get you too far. But back to the conversation at hand is, the first thing I think that what's the council looking at is, are you going to take away the right for people within a two-hundred-foot radius to have a voice? That's section A, section B stands alone. The code compliance thing stands alone. So any, it's definitely in the code, in the two thousand and three is what I'm reading from tonight. Anybody that comes into an Airbnb in the city of Baldwin, the city council, the planning commission, and the building codes office has a full and direct responsibility to make sure those people are safe. Your son and daughter, your cousin and nephew go to a foreign city and spend the night in an Airbnb for a football game. And there's no escape, and the smoke detectors don't work, and the handrails aren't there, what are you going to feel like? We have that responsibility. We have asylum defenders that has to make sure that when people come to a beautiful city like the city of Baldwin and spend their time and hard-earned money here, that they are reasonably safe. Thank you.
Anybody else like to make comment? If not, we'll close public comment, open up council discussion. So again, the intent to put this on was from a request to discuss it, because the code does reference bed and breakfast. As well as we continually get Airbnb requests that get approved, as well as the the upcoming event in this area, to see how council wants to address all that, so, it's not necessarily. Council can do whatever they want, it's kind of a starting point to start those discussions, because we're only six months away from that occurring, so. Any feedback?
It's just a balance of incentivizing, you know, Airbnbs, we got, Maple Leaf's a really good example, everyone comes to town, I mean, all my relatives come in, they stay in Lawrence and Overland Park or anything, it's just, I mean, it's ridiculous, we don't have any accommodations for people. And I would hate to make that process more difficult, I think the the. The goal of incentivizing it is a good one, it's balancing that with safety, I think is, that's that's the conversation.
I guess without going through the R one, or, you know, the current code, it's hard to determine, I mean, what I took out of this was we're repealing all that, and there would be, there wouldn't be.
This was just a placement.
But but if if this ordinance went through, we would have no.
Correct.
Which really isn't acceptable.
Which goes to, I mean, you.
So that's what I took.
Starting a conversation, you got to start on one side or the other, you know, I don't want to dictate to the council.
Right, no, no, I get it.
What to change, so.
So this one would be no regulation.
This is one extreme.
Right. So so I read it right.
Yes. Good eye.
No, it's like, okay, so, I do think some, you know, the points are valid, you know, without comparing it to the current code, I do think you know, neighborhood input is important, I would be very concerned about alleviating that, and I do think enforcement's the other issue, right? You know, you can enforce those that step forward and go through the process, but, you know, you can't, we don't have the staff to enforce those that are just doing it. You know, we're not going to be patrolling and and, you know, marking car, looking for license plate, so. We do, I think we do need to make it as easy as possible with the right input to get it done, otherwise people are just going to do it, and and we would have no ability to try to have any input into safety and inspection and all that, so it's it's a balance of making it impossible to get it done. And you know you'll never be liable for anything, because we don't have any, but I I think we do need to look at the code, the current code. And see how we could actually change that if there are places that we think it's overly restrictive. And see how we could actually change that if there are places that we think it's overly restrictive. And maybe make those changes there. And maybe it's different, you know, you know, maybe there's a short term versus a, you know, an Airbnb. My understanding is the current code is once you're there, you're there, right? You'd be, you'd be annual inspections, et cetera. Maybe there's a, uh, I'm just thinking out loud, maybe there's a short term, you know, less than six months or, you know, um, more, more of the transient special event type of thing, um, Maple Leaf or whatever. There are certain things that we have events that come up that we definitely need it, but it's for a short period of time. And, you know, might be some accommodations to that type of, um, of bed and breakfast Airbnb or just, uh, transient. And then the input from the neighbors is, well, can you live with this for a weekend, a month, or whatever that timeline is? It's almost like maybe they're all, um, conditional use permits. Maybe that's the way to handle that.
And that, and that's how they're handled now, conditional use permits.
So their Airbnb's are just all cups. Okay.
Correct. Now, are you saying though, I guess what I caught from that, and maybe I'm misinterpreting, is like exempting the requirement of a conditional use permit during those Maple Leaf weekend or World Cup timeframe?
No, I think you just maybe make it, uh, easier to go through that process. And, and have, you know, neighborhood, you know, neighborhood com, you know, through the planning commission. So maybe it's a, maybe it's a template or a, a form of what, what's going to be required. Here are the things. I don't know that anything would be not done that we would do for a longer term. But I'm just thinking maybe there's a different standard for a short-term, um, bed and breakfast or transient accommodations. Don't know. I can see the need for sure.
Any other comments?
What is the current application process for an Airbnb?
Stu, I'm going to have to ask you to step up and answer that one. Current application process for an Airbnb. Can you step up to the mic and answer that one?
Well, actually the current application process is just what we're talking about. They come in and meet with us or Russ, myself or Russ, and they file for the conditional use permit. That's what starts the chain rolling. And of course gives the neighbors opportunity to weigh in. Um, it's went very well so far. It takes about a month to get through all that. And then once they're approved for that, um, they fill out either a building permit, depending on what they're doing, or a change of occupancy usage form. And then we'll go in and do a one-time safety inspection. And then when I leave there, I always tell them, you know, you can do this annually. But most people don't call us back. Um, it is a profit-making situation. As any hotel or motel, I know it's an Airbnb, but they get safety inspected normally by the, the city fire. But we're not set up like that. So it would be up to me to go once a year. It's just all on the name of public safety. Um, I say it again, somebody has to watch out for the people that are staying there. We want them to come. We want them to have fun and all that. But the city has a responsibility to make sure that they're in good hands. Thank you.
So I have a question.
Okay. I have a follow-up. So stay up there.
How would you then recommend Baldwin City through this? Cause this is our, our only means to allow for people visiting this area for the World Cup, for example, to take advantage of these visitors to stay in our community so that they spend their money here versus somewhere else?
Well, I don't have a direct answer for that because that's a very broad and wide-based question. Certainly getting your Airbnb approval from the planning commission and then from the city is an option. There's lots of time to do that. That would be up to a public safety committee. And at the end of the day, the city council to draw up the regulations for something like that. I, without some time to think about it, I couldn't give you a very good answer tonight on that. You know, we're just, we want to get the business obviously, and we love to have the people here. But as your staff is limited, so is mine. So it's hard to kind of keep up with writing the regulations and door ordinances that we would need to, to do something like that. That's a, a whole lot of thinking right there. And I don't know exactly, was it this summer?
Yeah.
You know, what's going on?
May is when the team starts showing up.
There's a possibility you could write an ordinance for that particular time period, you know, with, with the sunrise and the sunset on it that were relaxed restrictions.
That's why.
Just have a.
This conversation. So.
Yeah. Just have a, uh, city inspection that would only be lawful for that particular time period. Um, and not.
But if.
That would be up to you, but not if with something like that on, you know, on a temporary venue for a month or two, um, that would be up to the council to.
So I guess going back to that though, if they went through that process and got a city inspection, then why, what would be the incentive for somebody to Airbnb out their house for that short amount of time? They might as well just.
To, to saying to keep it going?
Yeah. I mean, I'm trying to think outside the box on how do we incentivize people that want to take advantage of that time, lease out their house to benefit Baldwin. But without the regulation, you see what I'm saying? Just if we're going to sunset something.
Your, your, your code part of it doesn't change. The inspections and the code rules and regulations and the IRC and IBC are the same. Um, I don't think there's a very good way around that because a lot of that's fire codes and they can't be changed. As far as relaxing the planning commission, um, approval, that could be relaxed. And then of course, if somebody wants to continue that business after the sunset, then they could go back through the regular process and their neighbors would have a say in it.
Correct.
But, um, we're looking at five percent, maybe 10%. Probably more like three or four percent of the people in town that are able to do something like that. Versus taking away the vote of 80 or 85 or 90% of people that live by it. I mean, um, it's, it's something to really weigh up, you know?
I, I get that. Um, it's just a unique opportunity we have. I mean, one that we'll ever see again in our lifetime.
Certainly be in your hands. Um, and, and could be done through the council. I, I would, I would say there's probably a lot of cities are making exception for the World Cup. So I, if I was to look into that, I'd probably look at some of these cities and see how, you know, how they're doing it. And what their plans are and see if you could find a model for it, um, to benefit the city. And the people that live here and the restaurants and the grocery stores would be, be a good thing. And we'd, we'd still do the same safety inspection and stuff, make sure they're all good. Yeah. You'd probably have to potentially waive some of that planning commission stuff, which right now, tonight, it would look doable to me if, if the city council wanted to move that way. It's a possibility. I'm sure there's other cities that have done just that, that, you know, got ahead of the curve a little bit.
Jay, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah. Uh, you said it takes about a month right now to get the Airbnb license right now.
The planning commission.
Yeah. What would your suggestion be to maybe be able to speed that up a little bit? Well, maybe make it two to three weeks. That way, you know, if people did decide, maybe their plans change and say, March or April, they would still have time to meet the regulations.
The, the only way that could be done is the planning commission would have to meet more than once a month. And the mailer time, from the time that the mailers are sent out to people within the 200-foot radius would have to go out sooner or faster, or may even be priority mail. I mean, the mailer, the notification methods would have to speed up. And the planning commission, we'd have to have a special planning commission in place for a while. It would be probably every two weeks. Um, I'd have to get with Russ on the details of the timing, but the once a month with the planning commission and the mailers are what eats up a lot of the time, unfortunately. Uh, with that, giving people, getting the notices to them. And then, um, when the notices go out, the people have to get them in a certain amount of time before the planning commission meets. So everybody has time to, you know, make up their mind whether they're going to be there or not, and stuff like that. But the, the, the process could be shortened. Um, I honestly think as a human being, if you're going to do that for the World Cup type of stuff, that you'd probably have to take it upon the council to, to not waive the safety inspections, but potentially waive possibly some of the planning commission things, unfortunately, just for that specific time, which would, I don't know how long it goes on, a month or two months?
Three months.
Two months.
Three months.
Yeah, that's, that's a while. But, um, I think it could be done. If the city took steps and, and got a model program going, it could be done. I mean, I certainly would be wanting to do my part, uh, to help, obviously. But that's kind of a one-time deal for this area. You know, I don't, I don't follow soccer a lot, but, uh.
I don't either. My wife.
It sounds like a pretty big deal from everything I've heard. So.
Like seven Super Bowls.
Biggest deal in the world.
Yeah. I'm certainly not against trying to do my part to help the people of Baldwin benefit from it any way we can.
Okay.
I'll say that.
Thank you, Stu. Technically we closed public comment, but I'll make an exception for you, Tina.
Sweetheart, just to help you, um, and kind of to address your question, conditional uses and the publication time and all that is state statute. So one thing you can do is, you know, don't put it under that umbrella of the conditional use. And then so just again, I would probably encourage you to try to really do some powerful outreach. And again, maybe have a town hall meeting and give people the opportunity to say, hey, we're going to do this. Like we're going to have a short-term approval process from May to July. Anybody that meets the qualifications, whatever that may be, and you could even have a few things in there, you know? You need to have some parking, like if somebody lives on a postage stamp and, I mean, typically we have off-street parking. But I don't know what you'd want to put in there. But my, my biggest thing is don't call it a conditional use because that's what's handicapping you. Cause there's a 20-day publication period from the time of the meeting, from the time it's published. And then the notification goes, it can't be less than 10 days to the, I would try to omit that, uh, neighborhood note. Or the 200 feet anyway, you know, put some stuff together. So again, put it out there that you're going to do something. If somebody comes in, I would just look at notifying touching property lines. And just saying that's what people, that's what we're going to do. So don't get up in arms. We're just going to notify the people as they come in. And maybe have the applicants give, give two weeks or so, you know, it depends on the review process. If it's just going to be not a formal planning commission, but a.
Staff review.
Staff review, a life safety review, and get those things clicked out. That's the way I would look at it. Don't try to run it through that legal process. And again, it's that window for this event. Anyways, food for thought. Thanks for letting me share that. I just feel, I feel your pain and, and I really think there is a way to do it. And if you try to, you know, follow that state statute, it's just muddy in the water for you. So.
So is this something council would like staff to take a look at what other cities are doing on this World Cup issue and bring back a model ordinance?
Yeah. I, I think that's the way to go.
Okay. All right. Next agenda item, this is similar ordinance 1525 is for the RVs. We discussed it at the last meeting. Um, the planning commission requested we take a look at this ordinance. Uh, because it only allows for the parking, I believe. And Stu, you can get up and speak and help me out on this. In, uh, for what 30 days or something without special permit or special thing. So again, we just basically did the same ordinance to put it as placeholder for council. So that we got this on your guys' agenda to see what you wanted to do. Stu, that's you.
Your money's worth out on midnight, right? Well, um, you already know about, um, article nine. Obviously you all know that, that, that the, the city codes, you know, tell you that you're allowed one visiting mobile home for a 30-day period in the city of Baldwin. It's been that way for, I don't know how long, but probably a while. He goes on to say that you can have a camper or mobile home actually stored in your side or, or rear yard or inside of a building for an indefinite period of time. However, you're supposed to, if the city inspector wants to, which I probably would not do, I could go by and actually, I could seal the faucets and, and, and stuff, and nobody's supposed to take the tape off. Well, that's probably never going to happen with me. But, uh, anyway, the, the 30-day rule, you know, has been here for a while. So, and we really don't have many that I'm aware of. We have an exception for one that the planning commission had approved, but there's not too many around the people actually living in them. If they are, they're probably under the radar a little bit. I mean, we do that on kind of a complaint basis. And then, you know, as I'm making my rounds, I kind of keep an eye on things and, and, uh, again, our time is limited. We've got a lot on our plate right now with winter closing in and all the building projects going on. Um, so again, what I would, what I would refer to on this is we know that it's against the city code. We already know that. The five or 10% of the people that can really afford some of these nicer campers, you know, some of them are pretty big, some of them are. You have to consider, so if you're that neighbor, depending on if you got a, a north, south, east, west driveway and that big old camper sitting there all the time, except for when they're on vacation, how is that going to block your sunlight? To your yard, potentially your garden, potentially your flowers that you love and invest in. How is that camper potentially going to block your view? Say it's parked in somebody's backyard wherever somebody's using it in their backyard and happens to be in their line of sight, looking down towards the creek over off of Orange Street. You know, it could have affected your property because it's sitting in that driveway with your giant snowstorm, the drifts come around it or six foot deep in your driveway. Cause the neighbors campers there. And you're talking about a limited amount of people that can afford most of those types of campers. There's not that many in Baldwin. So we're looking at changing something for five to 10% of the people versus 60 or 70% it could affect. You know, another concern with it is a lot of things go on in campers that aren't necessarily, uh, within the realm of the city laws. But i- if we're allowed campers just to be everywhere, it presents a 911 problem. So you have health problems, you have a heart attack, you have a stroke, you have something going on, domestic violence. Somebody's calling emergency. Nobody knows who's in the camper, what's their names are, where are they from? We don't have a clue. We're just showing up and the police are supposedly going to surround the camper if they're at the right one. That in itself is a whole bunch of cobwebs. You know, you, you buy a nice house here in town and, uh, somebody moves in a nice 60, 70, $8,000 camper, it's real pretty rigged. And you're laying there with the windows open on a spring night and all you can hear is air conditioning running all night long. How's that, how's that going to work for you? Or potentially the music playing in there. There's so many things to consider. You start talking about just letting people put campers wherever they want for any length of time they want. So, I, um, not against campers in any way, shape or form, but for 80 or 90% of people in town that will not probably own one, I think that's where we've got to look, look real hard. Any questions?
I do. So Stu, on, under four dash nine oh three, it says, one, it has to have a permanent or a temporary permit?
You're supposed to, but nobody.
But we don't do.
Does right now. I mean, we.
And then it also states under B, that it can't be, uh, in the side or rear yard of any premise for a period of not to exceed 30 days.
Yeah. There is a thing on that goes on down and talks about you can store, store them. It's, I think it's on the next page. Let's see. You're supposed to have a permit, which we have an issued any permits form and since I've been here, unfortunately, um, for storage. Storage of any, any unoccupied, I'm sorry, uninhabited mobile homes within the corporate city limits of Baldwin shall be permitted in the side or rear yard of any premises, provided that such storage is not in conflict with any other sections of this article. That's uh four, four oh nine three s, three?
C three.
Four oh nine three C?
C three.
Three.
Four dash nine oh three C three.
So, there is, there is some storage allowed, but um you're not supposed to be like living in them full-time and stuff.
I guess, I think what the planning commission was getting at is this is kind of an antiquated code of having a permit to even have an RV in the city limits. Um, because of the requirement to essentially have a permit.
We're supposed to, according to code, but it hasn't, again, it'd just be a matter of having that. People do, I think a lot of that probably went away, I would assume during COVID.
I think, I don't think it's ever been.
Um, I don't, I haven't seen.
This actually states under B, that inside or rear yard for a period not to exceed thirty days shall be permitted.
Shall be permitted?
Permitted, even if it's staying.
It, it could be, um, as, again, I haven't seen any.
I think that's why the, I, my point is, that's why the planning commission wanted us to take a look at this one specifically, because.
The permits, is what you're saying?
Because of the permitting requirements and how they store it, different things like that.
So, you're focusing on the permits more so than the time period, or?
I think they wanted us to look at, they asked last time that we approved that conditional use permit to look at the time period, because I'm not seeing it in here, but correct me if I'm wrong, I guess we were told, or I was under the assumption that it was only ten days, that you, somebody.
Thirty days is allowed, so I.
That's, that's my understanding from reading this as well, but I was always under the assumption it was.
It's supposed to be thirty days and one permit, and then only thirty days per year, as far as living in it, or visiting family or something along those lines.
Okay.
I don't believe that it's saying that you can't store one in your yard if it doesn't violate code or in your building or wherever.
I agree.
I think, I think it's just the whole period of, you know, the time you can live in one, and it, of course, that plays, you know, back into the air and be, be to an extent as well. Um, two different things going on there, any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you, any public comment to this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, open up council discussion. So, this is another one that just the council needs to take a look at and work through, um.
Had that conversation last meeting about the cup that we provided for High Street, right?
Yes.
And I think that was for a year.
That was for a year.
I think some of the points you brought up are valid, um, I don't think you know quite how it is gonna impact you until you live by it for a period of time. You probably don't consider some of the things you brought up that might be okay with it until you realize that you're not. So, I do think that whatever is done would certainly have a, a time limit to it. And, you know, you certainly have planning commission, uh neighbor input, or lack thereof. But then if things aren't, you know, if they just didn't think it'd be a big deal, then it does become a big deal, then they need to have the ability to make a different decision with new information than um how it really impacts them. So, a year, maybe the appropriate amount of time, I don't know what it is, but I don't think we should make these permanent by any stretch of the imagination. And we can go through the cup process for everybody, right, I mean.
Yeah, I think that's what the planning commission just wanted direction on, on if we wanted to stick with this. Um, I mean, do we want, does the council wanna continue with the temporary permit? On that? Or are you, I mean.
The, the real question, if it's not being enforced, what does it matter?
I, that's just what I was gonna say.
If it's not being, unless it's shaking maybe answer, maybe, maybe it's beneficial to have something with teeth in the background, rather than have it being a free-for-all in the background?
And I, generally, if you have an ordinance so that you have something you can do if it becomes a problem, it's better than to not have anything and have to recreate it. So, if you have something in place, I mean, they're, that's like saying we don't get all the, that's like saying we don't get everybody who speeds, anybody who speeds through here, we're not enforcing it. That doesn't mean that if somebody's speeding through there and they get, you know, they cause an accident or something, you don't have the right to use that. So, I don't think taking it away makes a lot of sense, and I would also, you know, I think part of the things Stu was saying is, are we, you all creating or changing something that really is not an issue for a large amount of people? Do you have a big enough problem that you need to be doing something? Or are you creating a new system for something that's a small problem, it's a, it's this very specific thing that you just need to address that day? But actually having something so that you can enforce it, I think is gonna be crucial to any of it, you don't want a free-for-all. Unless you guys like the idea of a mobile home park all over Baldwin?
No. Any other comments? Seeing none, budget finance, Scott.
Uh, we did meet, um, did meet on the seventh and uh Baker Tilly took us through just kind of the year-to-date financials and proj- projected year-end reserves. Um, didn't have October yet, so we still are missing kind of the last, the last quarter of the year. Uh, but things looked generally good, um, I think the electric fund, again, we have three more months to go, but looked on track to uh what we, what we were shooting for with the, the rate increase that we had to do to get it to the reserve, so that looked like it was on track. Um, um, so we need to take another look at it again, uh, in November and December, as we get the, the final months rolling in. We've asked Jeff to talk to KMEA to get us a twenty twenty-six utility cost and, and usage forecast for us. That kind of is the basis of um what we set the budget on, when we, you know, when we look at what we budgeted for twenty twenty-six, then we'll see what they say the costs are gonna be, we'll see how, if we have an issue or not, based on what we passed for the twenty twenty-six budget, so that will be the first kind of litmus test on how well we did that budget, which is never accurate, but you're trying to get as close as you can, so we'll, we'll take that information. Um, they also like to forecast what our usage is gonna be for the year. Um, and it kind of fluctuates all over the place from really high, and it's, it's harder as people go to LEDs and, and things, you know, even though you're adding, adding uh rooftops, you're not adding rooftops like you did twenty years ago that are high-energy users, so. The growth, as we, if you remember, we talked about in the utility discussions, we had the rate discussions. Um, you know, our hundred and fifteen percent peak stuff that, that they forecast, we were not really getting there, so it was, it was typically lower than they thought we were gonna be from a usage perspective. Um, you know, which does two things, if you've got a budget that requires X and you got lower usage, the, you know, the other thing is the rate, right, so you gotta meet the, you gotta meet the, the expenses, and it's based on your rate times your, your usage, so we'll have to go look at that. We'll bring that back and, you know, we're obviously shooting for some kind of public outreach here before the end of the year. I mean, the good news is, as you guys remember, that we don't have to do a rate adjustment um, or set the race until really the first meeting in February. Because we build in arrears, right, so we'll have some time to get this information, get as much as we can, whether we have December or not, even in January, we can come forward with what twenty twenty-five looked like. Talk about the forecast, talk about the budget, and then say, here's what the rates look like they need to be, flat, up, down, whatever, so. That's, that's the plan, we're just trying to figure out when to have that, kind of that informational outreach of, here's what it looks like. Um, here's all the information and make that, obviously, figure out how we're gonna do that, and I know the communications committee is looking at policies around what that needs to look like and timing ahead of rate increases and all that, so we'll definitely want to line up with whatever comes out of that committee, so. So, we're looking for that forecast, um, talked about the utility billing format change recommendation um, that we wanted to try to get to the same way we're doing the water bill now, where we brought the, pulled the debt out and did away with the meter fee, um, need to obviously get Amber and see if there's enough lines left on our current billing format, I think we had one extra line, if we, if I remember correctly, to, to maybe do this. Um, but as we went through this last change, we pulled that meter fee out into the debt fee, we've already kind of done that, alright? That's what all that education was and that feedback was, we changed it, but um we haven't really done that on the bill. Okay, so. Oh, right, so trying to do that on a single bill will be problematic, so they might have to get two, two of them, okay. So, we'll bring that forward with, you know, we'll probably go through the same analysis we did when we did the water, saying, here's what it looks like today, here's what it looks like in the new format, the, the total is the same, it's just gonna show up differently on your bill, we'll just have that back to the council, um, you know, the timing of that, again, maybe we get that done for the first January bill, which, I mean, we have to make that decision by February and have it all set up in the system to do it that way. So, it doesn't impact the rates at all, it just impacts the transparency on what your rate is uh being spent on. Um, and then talked about water, wastewater cost rate projections, again, that'll be something we need to bring out, Baker Tilly's looking at that, again, what's the reserve, what's our policy? And what's our projections, we'll bring that all forward as well. Um, and that was it, next meeting would be, um, I think we, we, we need to meet this Friday, uh, to continue, continue that conversation, I think we'll have October in. Uh, so this Friday, seven thirty AM, uh, second floor, City Hall.
Development, Cora.
Uh, we have not met this month yet, we meet on the twenty-fourth, second floor, City Hall, four o'clock.
Public Safety, Susan.
We have not met. I don't know. I'm not finding it on my calendar, I will.
Email Amber and post it on the website. Public Works, Julie.
Uh, yeah, we were supposed to meet last Thursday, and we didn't because people were gone. Um, so, we are gonna meet this Thursday at nine o'clock at the Public Works Building.
Strategic Planning, Scott.
Um, we have not met, uh, but we are meeting uh this Friday, ten AM, I think we moved it to? Ten AM, um, second floor, City Hall, and we're gonna start looking at the employee handbook and go through that and bring back potential recommended changes for the council to, to look at.
You're gonna be up there a while on Friday.
We're not tuning in all in one day.
See you on your budget meeting before.
Oh, that's true, it'll feel like all day.
Yeah.
Big Advisory Committee, Jay?
Uh, we have not met, um, I'm looking at a new date uh for our next meeting. Um, with the holidays coming up, we're trying to make sure we can get one where everyone can meet before the end of the year, so uh, I'll get that to Amber and we'll get it posted.
Communication, Susan.
We are scheduled to meet on Friday, the twenty-first, at two o'clock here, and I found Public Safety, I currently have it scheduled for December ninth at four o'clock.
Any staff comments? Council comments? Uh, answer a couple of questions, so waterline update, I have none. Um, sorry you had to stay for that whole thing to, uh, I'll work with Mayor Elect and let him know what I've worked on so far, but um, it's the federal government, so good luck getting answers. Uh, yeah, yeah, so, um, no updates on that, administrative search, I know the committee has pared down the applicants. Uh, from here on out, it's kind of the council's decision and how everything goes, so. Um, with that, I'll entertain a motion for an executive session for purposes of discussing non-elected personnel with our city attorney, uh, council and myself for till eight twenty-five, uh, for the purposes of discuss said non-elected personnel.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
When moved to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll. Motion passes.